Let's go. Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the August 1st, 2025 special meeting for the San Diego Audit Committee. Interpreter, before we get started, we'd like to ask our interpreter to introduce themselves and walk through how to access our interpretation services for today's meeting. Interpreter, go ahead.
Good morning. Announcement from interpreter. To use the interpretation feature, please scroll to the bottom of the screen where the meeting controls are. Click on interpretation icon, world, and select English as your language. If you're joining through the Zoom mobile app, cellphone, tablet, etc., please press the ellipsis, then interpretation, and then choose your language. Finally, click on mute original audio to not hear the original Spanish low in the background. Headsets are available for interpretation. If you're in the meeting room, please check out a headset from the receptionist in the lobby. Buenos dias, aviso por parte del intérprete. Para hacer uso del servicio de interpretación, favor de desplazarse a la parte inferior de la pantalla de Zoom donde aparecen los controles. Haga clic en el icono de interpretación, globo terráqueo, y seleccione Spanish, español. Si está utilizando la aplicación móvil de Zoom, celular, tableta, etc., presione los puntos suspensivos, luego interpretación, y luego el idioma. Si no desea escuchar el audio original en inglés en el fondo, por favor seleccione mute original audio, silenciar audio original. Contamos con auriculares disponibles para el servicio de interpretación. Si se encuentra en la sala de reunión, favor de pedir auriculares con la recepcionista en el vestíbulo. Gracias.
Thank you. Now we have the tribal acknowledgement. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. The tribal nations of the San Diego region have historically faced injustices. Before we acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples, who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression, we pay our respects to the unceded territory and homelands of the eighteen tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States. From our four cultural groups, the Kumiai, the De Guenio, the Lu Sueno, the Kupenyo, and the Kawea, this land has nourished, healed, protected, and embraced them for many generations in a relationship of balance and harmony. As members of the San Diego community, we acknowledge this legacy. We aspire to learn from indigenous tradition, traditional knowledge, and experiences in undoing the injustice of the past. Now, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Let me begin. I have pledged allegiance to the five of the United States of America, and to a republic, religious family, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very huge justice for all.
Thank you. Before we jump into the meeting, just like to ask a clerk to confirm that we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a quorum this morning.
Fantastic. Appreciate everybody coming in for the special meeting. It's been a while since we've met, but we have a lot to cover. Before we go into public and member comments, I'd like to recognize Shanae Pickney Forrest, a former member of this committee, and there she is over there, who started in her new position as a Director of Internal Controls at San Diego. In early July, thank you, Shanae, for your hard work on the audit committee. I look forward to seeing the building and in your new role and how it's going to help the agency. So, and thanks for being here. With the departure of Shanae and the terms of the other two pluggers coming to an end in late October, we're currently seeking new members. We're looking for individuals with at least ten years of experience as a CPA, certified internal auditor, or in a professional accounting, financial, or legal roles related to audit management. The application for public membership on the San Diego Audit Committee was posted to our website this morning and will remain open for the next thirty days. The new terms are expected to begin in November. For those of you who know somebody who might be qualified, please share the application. Very important for the agency to have those roles filled, and thanks to those who are public representatives on the committee currently. Thank you. We're going to go on to... Do we... Sorry, item. Do you want to bring on to any non-agenda public comments and member comments? Do we have any public commenters?
Yes, Chair. We do have one public comment. Blair Beekman, you can go ahead.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks for the meeting today. Kind of the last big meeting of the summer before recess. I just want to kind of reiterate that I think from the incredibly strong ice and custom border sweeps in June and May by the Trump administration, federal administration, they're taking a break. They're stepping back a bit. Thank you for that. I think we're all kind of relieved about that. I think they were just creating more and more violence for our local neighborhoods. It was becoming clear and apparent. Thank you that we're going to reevaluate how that process can be working into the future. It's really important that we are addressing data collection, how that can be, you know, there is concern that federal agencies are tapping into and, you know, stealing information, basically, and we have to kind of be prepared for that. And not only stealing information, but most important, to have good safeguards in place and good civil protections with our data collection and how it can work. Good luck in those efforts to work on those things and that we're addressing those concepts. It's just important at this time, what we're working on, to develop best practices. And I think we can be working to accomplish a middle by doing that. And so, good luck what each of us in our county positions, city and county positions can do. And I think that's about it for myself this morning. Good luck to your meeting today and peace. Good luck in working towards peace, not war. And that means open democracy, communication, good accountability. And why are you having your meeting today? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Before we move on, we have our CFO, Dawn Fattas, sitting in for Mario, who's out, and she has a few things she'd like to give someone to update on.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Here today, in place of Mario, who is away, to provide a quick report on the agency. As Shanae has moved over to the agency in her Director of Internal Controls role, we're very excited to have her taking stock of where we are, you know, at kind of a deeper internal policy procedure corrective action plan level. We have a lot of work to do, but we're confident that we're putting resources and structure in place now to do it. That advertisement that you mentioned for the Audit Committee vacancy is live now on the website. So, we do encourage folks who are interested to look to the website and see that. So, the board approved at its last meeting the agency goals for the CEO, or rather, earlier this month, last month. Last month, I'm on August 1st. I feel like July just flew by. And then we had an all-hands meeting earlier this week that shared the goals with the staff and kicked off our goal setting for the fiscal year. The six goals we're focusing on are the focus on the fundamentals, leadership and structure, oversight and transparency, delivering on the mandates, fiscal responsibility and collaboration. And we're really trying to make sure we have the alignment in place, set expectations, and really clarify roles and responsibilities across the agency so we can build that solid foundation. We do have a new agenda management system. Some people may have noticed some changes online. It's called Escribe. The agendas and reports may look different to you when you're online. It does have some great benefits. The members of the public can submit written comments online through the system. Videos are going to be bookmarked, so you can go directly to specific items. But if you have any questions or need any assistance, obviously, contact staff and we can help you. The Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee also has a vacancy right now. This is the committee that works to provide oversight for the transnet sales tax measure projects and programs. So, if you know anyone interested, the application period is open through August 27th. We are seeking a new member that is a licensed engineer. So, that is the current vacancy that's open. So, I have, you know, when we look at audit updates, I'm not sure that all our numbers will match Courtney's exactly. And that's, okay, we have so many internal and external audits that we're tracking on that we have now completed about a hundred and sixty recommendations from outstanding corrective action plans, have about a hundred to go. Of those, about a hundred and ten are related to the transnet audit action plans. Eighty-three have been closed and twenty-seven are in progress. We have a lot of agency resources, obviously, dedicated to the work, and we're going to really rely on our new Internal Controls Director to help us put effective processes in place so we can continue making good progress and implement those action plans. Moving on to the back office system, Mario previously mentioned we're facing delays with implementation of the new system. It was supposed to go live in July. We're still working on worst and best-case scenarios so we can continue service until we have that new system online. The staff is going to be providing a project update to the board in September. We have a new emergency project that's been started in the vicinity of Elvira to Moreno Los San Alignment Double Track Project. Crews have begun installing the K railing along Santa Fe Drive so they can begin all the stabilization work in that area. And then regarding the regional plan, the draft regional plan feedback period has concluded. We received more than twelve hundred comments on the plan. So, feedback and network changes will be shared with the board in late September. The next steps are to release the draft or release the environmental impact report in the fall, and we're going to be asking the board to adopt the final plan in December of this year. And then finally, the regional early action planning or REAP 2.0 funding. San Diego and the San Diego Foundation are providing fourteen million dollars to ten affordable housing projects that are planned to add nearly a thousand affordable units to the region by 2030. And as a reminder, this is funding that comes from the state through its regional early action planning or REAP 2.0 program. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Fantastic. Appreciate the update. Lots of information. I'm glad to hear that staff was shared. They had the CEO goal shared with them. I think that as the pages keep turning in the organization to see how staff can get aligned with management and keep the good work moving forward. So, do we have any member comments? Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. First, Shanae, congratulations. Definitely will miss your contributions to this committee. Another one relative to the agency update, I'm Don. Thank you for that. One of the things that I don't know that we need to discuss now since it's not on the agenda, but if you want to give a quick answer now, you can, or we can just potentially make this as a potential future agenda item. I do know that the back office update was a potential dependency on being able to readily get clean ACF as opposed to having a qualified opinion. And I don't know, you know, now that we've slipped into another year, I don't know if that, are we, of not getting the back office, are we going to be challenged in that, continue to be challenged in that space?
Okay. Kim may have some better news on this.
Okay.
Good morning. Kimberly Trammell, Director of Accounting and Finance. And I've had that conversation actually with our external auditors, David Farr, and they did, when they were here last present, that there were improvements in the reports coming out of the current back office system because staff had been working on that reconciliation. And so, we did have, while still a modified opinion, an improvement in that modified opinion. And so, they did indicate that if the, so, we're closing 25 right now, that if we have the same type of reporting and we don't have, most of their concern was related to prior year activity that couldn't be necessarily cleaned up or confirmed. So, I believe that going into 25, if we have the same reporting that we had in the '24 audit, that we would be in good shape for a improved opinion.
Okay. I appreciate that. But again, it's clearly been a concern of mine, as you know. So hopefully, we'll be able to make that happen. Thank you. The next comment I wanted to make, again, just happy to be back. It's been a while. It feels kind of weird, like I've missed everybody. But the, relative to that, I did notice that if we go back, it's now August, and of the, so far this year of the seven regularly scheduled meetings, we've only been able to make two on the time that was scheduled. So, I believe in the fall, around October to November, the, is when we start setting the schedule for the next year. So, I would encourage the Chair and Courtney, the IPA, to potentially work with the staff and the leadership to see if we can maybe arrive at a better time or just come up with some way to make sure that we're able to keep this meeting on a regular cadence, if possible, because I think that's very important. It's, you know, I personally view this as the most important policy advisory committee, and it's important for the public to have some predictability, and it's important for our very valued public members to have some predictability so they can keep it on their calendar. So, maybe we can figure something out. I know when the Audit Committee first started, I believe we were in the afternoon of the fourth Fridays. I think that's probably more helpful for the auditor to be able to get the work plan done for the June meeting as opposed to the July meeting, something like that. That was moved because the Board perennial running over doesn't seem to be as big of a problem. I don't know if we want to risk that, or maybe we can look at trading with a committee that runs on a third Friday afternoons or something. But just, I think it'd be useful to have that conversation so we can get this meeting back on a predictable schedule, if we can. And then last, I wanted to just note the comment that we do, you know, as the Chair mentioned, we do have the round going out for recruiting of the, of the new candidates, which is going to allow me to channel my inner Agnes and just note that we've had Board Policy 39 updates out there for a very long time now. They've gone, they've gone through two audit committees. They've been to the Executive Committee twice, and they've been to the Board once. And we're expected to come back relatively quickly, but it didn't happen. I, you know, I brought and up, you know, I asked Chair for the updates, said it'd probably be in May, but then the last time I touched it, said, you know, there's a desire possibly from the IPA or the Chair of this community to come back here. Not sure why that's necessary, but if we want to have another conversation here and we think it's necessary, I would at least encourage us to try to commit, get a commitment from Board leadership that within a month of it coming here, it goes to the Board. Just because right now, we're in this cycle of it takes so long to get to the Board. By the time it does, we've got new leadership. They have questions, and it cycles back here. We get new leadership. We have questions. It cycles back there. So, we just really need to get this moving quickly. And I'd just like to point out, and we have incredibly valuable contributions, particularly from Agnes as well, who's now going to be termed out because of the current policy, where if we had adopted the new policy, she would have one more year on her term. So, we'd be able to keep her around for one more year. So, just wanted to bring those comments up. Thanks.
Appreciate that, David. Go ahead, Agnes.
Yeah. So, Dave, thanks for bringing up the policies. Thirty-nine, because I was going to bring that up too, because it feels like we've been talking about this both one and two years now. And I thought that, you know, it, for various reasons, always got, you know, pushed back. And then I think the last reason I heard is wait until October when all these policy changes happen at the same time. But then last October, somehow it didn't happen. I would strongly encourage, you know, whatever we need to do to follow up on that one, because I do think two years too short, not just for me, but in general, for the public members. Because it takes a while to understand and learn about a San Diego. Another question I, so, I don't know exactly what needs to happen to move this forward. I know, Dave, you tried really hard and for whatever reason, it still didn't, hasn't happened. So, and then maybe we'll rely on Jack, you know, to push this forward. Then the second thing, my question is the process to, now we had to recruit three public members, you know, and what's the process from this point on to make sure we have people in place, right, by October? So, can someone talk about that?
You know, in order to have people in place, I think that we hopefully get lots of people, you know, applying. But this is, you're right, this is an absolute challenge that we're facing. And, you know, being fairly new on the committee, I'm not sure exactly what, what our options are, but I'm working with staff to find, making sure we do have the committee into today's point, making sure we do have regular and consistent meetings that are engaged. So, Courtney, I'm not sure if you have any insight on that.
On the consistency, you mean? I think it's optimistic. I mean, I definitely think that where we are, and Emily and I just talked through the process, that it needs to go to the Board. The Board has to create a selection committee. From there, they then have to vet those, right? We need an independent financial expert. So, I would encourage, if you know of an independent financial expert who you think would be a great candidate for the selection committee, that if you could bring those names forward to me, we're going to try to do some legwork on our side to support that, right? But I think knowing that September, that's going to come to the Board. They have to create a selection committee that needs an independent financial expert. So, October is incredibly optimistic. I don't think it would be achieved. So, I think we are going to be in a layover situation, if that's possible. And then we've got a lot, I just want to say, there's a lot of candidate committee processes going on right now. You have ITAC, you have US. I believe that the San Diego Audit Committee is recruiting as well. So, I think we need to be aware. It's not a perfect time.
No, that's it. I think maybe we can, well, Dave, you went through this many times, actually. Do you have any insight or advice? How can?
Well, one, I don't know what the current pleasure is of the existing two members, but if we do run into risk, I think, Agnes, you would recall when we were coming up with this last time, it happened to be right at the time we were hiring a new IPA. And so, in order to get around that, we simply extended the terms of the public members by six months, which can be done through Board action if the public members are willing to serve, and through just a Board action, just to override the policy and extend it. So, I would recommend, one of the things I would suggest is if we get to the point in, you know, late September, that we think that we're not going to be able to recruit and retain and have public members, if the two current ones would be so willing to look at extending their term by a month or two or three, just until we can make sure we get solid public members on board. And that's, that was, that, we did that exact last time, but it was for a different reason. It was because we wanted to retain the expertise of the current public members while we were, while we were recruiting a new independent performance auditor.
Great. Okay. Thanks. I forgot about the extension part there.
Voice, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chair Fisher. Thank you for the comments. You know, it occurs to me that it sounds like this is a call of, an action call for this committee to be more stern. I don't know the background to why suggested audits or approved audits, edits to our board policy have been on hold for two years. I will work, I'm willing to be more stern to get this through, especially if it is affecting the membership, the makeup of this audit committee. And knowing that we are in a time where there are openings here, there are openings in other committees within San Diego. I also want to plug City of National Cities, looking for audit or committee members to our boards committees and commissions. So, you know, this call to action, what I'm saying here is I feel pretty responsible for this call, call to action. And I actually wanted to ask a question. I used to be a appointee to the California Board of Accountancy, and I wonder whether, and of course, that's, you know, the agency that regulates the CPA profession. And I understand the need for members of this committee requires a CPA requirement. So, has there been, have they been approached perhaps to maybe get some, you know, advertise this require, this, these openings within their community? And if not, I'm willing to reach out to my previous contacts there and see whether there's interest there. What I'm trying to say here is I think each of us have a responsibility within the have a responsibility within the recruitment of these positions of these candidates as best as we can. And I'm willing to to step up to the call. Thank you.
My understanding is that the Board has not been reached out to. I don't think there's a CPA requirement on this particular Board. I think that there's a desire to have those financial skills. So I think it's a fabulous idea, though. I think any, you know, basically anywhere we can go. And that's where, you know, fellow Board members, if there's Rotary members, any place, the Department of, not Department of Commerce, the Chamber here, we really want to go in every direction to recruit members. And I'll talk to my counterparts as well at the port and at the airport and stuff, just to to try to bring names forward. So we are going to be actively working behind the scenes, but really want to encourage, if you have an idea, a thought, anybody for us to reach out to, then please provide that forward. The administration is the one who's managing this recruitment. But I want to make sure that I'm bringing forth names and we're doing everything possible. So I know that Agnes might possibly want to leave this committee at some point.
Thank you. Are there any other member comments? I will say that, you know, the Board Policy 39 has been a big topic for us. And I'll be honest, I wasn't aware of how deep and how long it's been going on. I'd like to put stuff to rest and to have some follow. And and I'll tell you that I think the holdup right now is just just understanding some of the things that have been put onto the Board Policy and some of the recommendations and and for me to understand exactly where they were coming from. So we won't get into a conversation about it, but I do believe it will be coming back to this committee for conversation and for action. And I agree, we need to to follow through and follow up with it. So I appreciate the conversations. We're going to go ahead on to item 2.2 with an update from the Office of Independent Auditor, Harvey Ruby.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Courtney Ruby. I'm the Independent Performance Auditor and just want to give you a little update on what's been going on. I would say, you know, at the forefront, certainly the risk assessment process. It is a comprehensive process, a lot of interviews, a lot of analyzing documents, and then preparing the annual work plan. And I'm excited to share that with you today. And I think that you'll, you'll see, you know, that a lot of work went into it and a lot of thought went into this. In addition, we also revised our policies and procedures recently and formally adopted them on July 1st. So that's super exciting to anytime a shop goes through a revision process. And just the combination too, we've had new members come on. There's a lot of great things going on in OIPA. I just want to say, as I reflected, I started, this shop was like five, six FTEs. You know, we're approaching 10 at this point. So we've doubled on top of everything else that we're doing. So really incredibly grateful for your support in our function and our needs in order to deliver on our mandate. So that's super exciting. And with that said, we're launching a new whistleblower hotline by Ethico. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I give the investigations report. But it's so important to have a third party platform because whistleblowers get very nervous, they're reporting internally. Can people see that? Is it on the system? And plus an ease of use. So not only is this going to be online reporting, it's a mobile app as well. And that, I believe, will solidify our process. We're also going to push it out to contractors, subcontractors, and vendors. And we know that, I think it's 40% of tips. When you catch fraudsters, I think it's 40% come from tips, according to ACFE. So it's a huge, it's a huge win. And we've been working on that and and really pleased with the mender that we've selected. And I've worked with vendors in the past. So I'm really excited by this platform. We have a solicitation out for audit management software as well, and that'll just assist us in doing our work more efficiently behind the scenes. We also have a second solicitation that's getting ready to go out for on-call outside legal services. And I will keep you updated on that. But we think that this, the way that it's crafted, will be more successful this time. And then as far as reporting, we have HNTB will be coming to you in October. And in November, the Independent Financial Assessment will be coming to you. That is a contract, and Independent Financial Assessment is a contracted audit being performed by Weaver. And right now, they're out in the field doing their validation, which is really in the final steps of the preliminary results. So that's coming together. And I am responsible for overseeing that. So we don't just contract it and it, you know, comes out to you. All the audits that we contract with, we are, it's overseen in a way where I'm involved in what's going on. I know what's going on. I under, I'm involved in every process. So it's almost as if they're a delegated team of OIPA and Extension. And it really gives us leverage and capability to do more with limited resources. So that's very good that that's going on. And then we'll talk about our peer review when I talk about the annual work plan and stuff. But several members of our team yesterday participated in peer review training that is put on by the Association of Local Government Auditors. They have a fabulous program. And how that works is is that peer, our team members, Deshari was a part of that, she'll be presenting shortly. What they do is you go and get trained in the peer review training, and you go out to other offices. So it's like a reciprocal program. So your peers come in and do it. And again, as I have spoken so highly about the Association for Local Government Auditors, they will be doing our peer review. And I'll talk about that in the annual work plan. So I think that gives you a glimpse into what's been going on since May 22nd. And that'll conclude my update.
Thanks, Courtney. Are there any any public comments, Francesca?
Thank you, Chair. We do have one public comment. Blair Pickman, you can go ahead. Blair, you're self muted at the moment. I think Blair may have stepped away from his computer, so we might want to.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Just made it, thank you. Yeah, I actually, I had my hand accidentally still raised. But I listened to what you, the report out you just offered. It sounds like we're going to have a good meeting today. Good luck on what you can be working on. And thanks for your conversation. To quickly offer, you offered working on the double tracking issues. And I wanted to offer my own comment on the future double tracking that it, I feel what you're working on now can be important. And that we have a sense as you're doing this that it's quite possible we don't have to double track the full Los Angeles corridor in the future or whatever needs to be fully double tracked. I think if we do these carve outs of a double track, that may be enough. And you're going to study that in these new build outs right now. Really study that and that it may just be enough. We don't have to be overdoing it with a double tracking. And that's an important consideration we don't talk enough about. So I just wanted to mention that. Good luck in the future and the, in the, in the rest of the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments.
Thank you. Are there any member comments? Seeing that, we'll go ahead and move on to item 3.1, the approval of meeting minutes. Are there any public comments on that, Francesca?
We do not have any public comments on consent.
Any member comments at all? No? Do I have a motion in a second?
Wait a second.
Okay, so we got a motion by Agnes and a second by Vice Chair. Go ahead and vote, please.
That motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic. We're going to move on to item, item number four, Presentation of the Office of the Independent Performance Auditors Annual Reports. Go ahead, Courtney.
Thank you, Chair. So we have several annual reports in front of you today. We're going to kick it off with the Annual Audit and Investigation Recommendation and Corrective Action Plan Status Report, and then Sandag and External Audit Recommendation Compilation Report. Before I hand it over to Deshari Samuel.
Courtney, you can just pull your microphone just a little bit closer.
Okay, thank you. Before I hand it over to Deshari Samuel, who is a Senior Performance Auditor that pulled all this incredible information together. And with the work, I just want to acknowledge the work of management and staff on this and the cooperation and as well as the the OIPA team. Last year, after we presented this report, management had requested, you know, is there a, is there a better way to do this? Because last year it all got logjammed at the, right before we presented the report and we said, sure, let's look at that, you know? So we have a continuous corrective action plan implementation process now in place. So I really appreciate management coming to the table and acknowledging that there was, you know, things could be done differently. And then us engaging together in a process to do that. And then just incredible commitment of Mario and his team towards the recommendation implementation. And I'm not going to say more about that because I really think it shines through in the results and you'll, and you see that or will see that. So I'm going to hand it over to Deshari to go ahead and present these two reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Good morning, everyone. So our agenda topics for this morning, we'll get into.
Just pull your microphone just a little bit. Audio still a little funky, I want to make sure everybody hear.
Is that better? Okay. We will get into the background of OIPA's audit authority and how it relates to corrective actions. Then I will give you some definitions that are key for the recommendation statuses and the implementation date terminology that we will use throughout this presentation. Then we will jump into both the Audit and Investigation Report, followed by the External Audit Report. And we will give you some insight of what we are looking ahead at OIPA. And I know Board Policy 39 is relatively popular this morning. So as you're familiar with, Section 3.1.9, the Audit Committee responsibilities include monitoring the implementation of corrective actions identified in audit investigative reports and inform the Board when corrective action is insufficient or untimely. In addition to that, OIPA's annual work plan, which is authorized by both the Board and the Audit Committee, our goal number four is the development and monitoring of corrective action plans to ensure OIPA's recommendations are clear, timely, and responsive and implemented by management expeditiously. So OIPA has four key definitions when it comes to the status of a recommendation. We first have pending, which means that implementation has not yet begun or evidence hasn't been provided by management for our validation. And then we have partly implementing, partly implemented, which means that some of those elements, after our testing, some of the elements of the evidence provided have been satisfied. However, there's some additional work that may be needed to completely implement that recommendation. You'll see in your reports that there are some items. We note that management recently provided us some support that is currently under review, and they are technically under the pending and partly implemented status for now until our review is complete. We also have our implemented status, which means that OIPA has completed our testing and verification of the evidence provided by management, and we deem the implementation to be satisfactory. And then we have closed, which means the IPA after, due to some circumstances, the IPA has determined that those recommendations are either no longer valid or feasible. And jumping into implementation date definitions. So the planned implementation date is the original date provided by manage in which they expected to implement certain recommendations. They usually provide it with their corrective action before we publish our audit reports. In some cases, management, management may request to revise those dates. And so in your reports, you'll see the newly revised dates are listed in blue. And then you'll see the original date underneath with a strike through. You'll also see some red dates, which represent dates that are currently considered past due. So we'll jump into the OIPA Audit and Investigation Recommendation Status Report. During fiscal year 2025, we reviewed the status of all audit and investigation recommendations that were outstanding. We reviewed support provided by management and performed testing to determine the accurate status of implementation. We reviewed six audits and two investigations in the 2025 fiscal year. I'll walk you through the recommendation highlights. And if you have any questions on particular recommendations, we can answer those questions at the end of the presentation. So of the six audit reports that we reviewed, there were 111 open recommendations. At the end of the fiscal year, two of them were closed. Forty-three were implemented, 15 are partly implemented, and 51 remain pending. And of the two investigations that we looked into, there were 14 open recommendations. And by the close of the fiscal year, four of them were implemented, four are partly implemented, and six remain pending. And so you'll see in this chart, it's a summary chart to reflect the current status of OIPA Audit and Investigation Recommendations. It'll be something similar to what we, what you'll see later on in our dashboard towards the end of the presentation. So over the last three years, OIPA issued a total, a total of 153 recommendations. And as of today, 77 of them remain open, meaning either pending or partly implemented. 68 of them were implemented and nine were closed. So overall, Sandag implemented 50% of all OIPA issued recommendations, reflecting their ongoing commitment to addressing OIPA's recommendations and driving improvement. In fiscal year 2025 alone, Sandag implemented approximately 38 of, 38% of open recommendations, demonstrating significant progress made within just the past year. And that concludes our OIPA audits and investigations. And so now we'll move into Sandag External Audit Recommendation, sorry, Sandag External Audit Recommendation Compilation Report.
Pardon me, Chair. I'm sorry, Ms. Samuel. Can we make comments on the first presentation?
Yes, absolutely.
The next one would be a separate item on the, under this agenda item, right? 4.2?
Yes.
Yeah, can we make, can we make?
Of course.
One?
These, this is a function of our, of our, the new look of our agendas. Each item is a separate item where the public does have the opportunity to comment for each item and the Board, the committee has the opportunity to discuss each item and vote on each.
But I think this is.
I believe, Amber Lynn, this is listed as one item.
We would, we would need an opportunity for the public to comment on each item, on each report.
Okay.
So we're taking public and member comments for each item. So I just want to make sure.
Chair, if I may ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Let's, let's cover this topic about the new agenda. So this is agenda item number four, which includes four, I think, sub items, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4. So I just want to get clarification on when we say each item, you know, should receive public comment and member comment. Are we talking about the larger section, which is item four, or each individual subsection, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4?
I believe that we need to give the public an opportunity to comment on each of the reports because they are different reports. However, the committee wants to split up its own discussion and its votes. It has the freedom to do that as individual items or it can take it as one item.
Got it. May I? Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I would suggest, so it sounds to me like we can have a huge chunk of information from our speaker and our presenters where we do receive all of the information for each of the four items. Or we can break it up into the subsections of 4.1 and such. So I would suggest that we do that so that we don't have, you know, a bolus of notes that we're taking and then asking questions on. So Chair, if you are amenable to that, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I, I think that would be fantastic. And I think there's similar actions for 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3. But then 4.4 is a little bit different because instead of the recommended, it's asking to approve. And I would be okay if there's anything that staff would need to change to accommodate that. I think we're good with that. Francesca, are we, we're okay with that? Okay, so if we've finished item 4.1, correct? So before we move on to item 4.2, just want to see if there's any public comments, Francesca?
Yes, we do have one public comment. Blair Beekman, you can go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. I am just listening today. And so I just wanted to thank you that you've worked really hard to try to sort out a way to address this item and offer public comment. I think you've worked out a good system. Doing things all at once can be helpful, but, but to split things up and to offer a bit of public comment for each of the sub items you're going to be talking about tends to help more. It tends to make for better clarity. And when you invite public comment, there can be a bit more thought and ideas in each subsection you're talking about. So thanks for your efforts and good luck with these, with these items. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments.
Any member comments? Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair Fisher. I do have three questions. First, I want to thank you very much for the presentation and for being willing to change a little bit the, how we're going to take all of this information in. There was a, so first I want to understand, there are six audits that were reviewed for, you know, how the actions or the, the recommendations have the status of the recommendations to date. Is it, is the six audits, are they a portion of all of the audits? Or that's the totality of the audits per this review period?
Those are all the audits with open recommendations.
Thank you. So you've reviewed all of the audits with open recommendations. My second question is, after the action is completed by, you know, administration, then the audit staff reviews the, you know, what the response was. Then the action is graded, meaning the status is updated per the statuses that you mentioned in your slide deck. What is the review period by the audit team of the action that is taken by administration? How long does that take? And if there, if it's not satisfactory to the audit team, does it go back to staff for further evaluation so that the recommendation can reach a satisfactory status?
So typically, once we receive evidence, we try to review evidence as soon as we obtain it. And we do an analyzation of what was provided and review the corrective action that management originally provided with the report. And then after that, we kind of, we come to a determination on if the support they provided is sufficient enough to implement the recommendation. And if we deem it that, like, there's still some items that, or it's not necessarily, it doesn't capture all of the components of the recommendation, we then send it back to management and let them know that these items or we, you, there's still some work that's needed. So the process, it, the time period varies, I guess, per recommendation. So it just all depends on the type of support that's provided by management.
Good, thank you. I'm encouraged to hear that there is a robust review by the audit team so that we are making sure that we are taking care, that the recommendations are being fulfilled and they are satisfactory or whatever the grade is going to be, right? And then my final question has to do with the Slide 12. It had, the, the, the section there said 50% of the recommendations were completed. And I'm curious, you know, how, you know, in the grand scheme of things, how good is this number? Such as, you know, is there a KPI, a key performance indicator for what we're aiming to do? Of course, we want to reach 100%, right? But within this time period, is 50% good? Could, you know, should it be bigger in, in terms of what the expectations are? Are we doing okay?
Vice Chair, I would, you know, when we look at this slide, I want to say 12 and 13. So with 12, we're looking over a three-year period. And 50% of all those recommendations were implemented, right? And then when we, can you go to Slide 13? So just in the last year, they implemented 30% of, 38%. I want to highlight that because it demonstrates the commitment to getting these done. So within the last year. So this is the first time you're seeing the charts. So I want to be conscious, yes, it's a baseline, right? We feel, just based on looking at 38% in the last year, where of the open recommendations were addressed. And we know that also the additional, the work that the two teams have done. So I can't say, I can't go from baseline to here, right? But I can tell you that these, we feel these are good results.
I think, thanks for giving the context that, you know, 38% was completed last year. Otherwise, that number is not 50%, will be much higher that is not completed. I, so I do appreciate that. And also I want to say, you know, thanks to you and your staff. Having a chart or tables like this is really helpful because there have been a lot of audits and there have been a lot of findings. I have to say, this committee has kind of lost track of, you know, where we are in terms of, you know, completing these recommendations. So this is, the first time is very clear. So we have something that we can evaluate because the audit committee's responsibility, as you pointed out, is to monitor the implementation of this corrective action. And if we feel that is not sufficient or not timely, we need to let the board know, right? So that's our job. Our job is not say, well, management, how come you haven't done this? And you need to speed up. That's the board's responsibility, I believe, right? So I'm trying to figure out what will this audit committee say? Okay, are these progress sufficient and timely? Or do we need to deliver a different message to the board? This is what I'm trying to figure it out. I personally think that, you know, having audits coming from '22, '23, that's still not clear, it's not industry standard as a, you know, best practice. I think we all agree to that, right? But I also appreciate that, you know, a lot of this got done in this past current year, right? So it really demonstrate the current management are working hard. One thing I think will be really helpful for this committee and the board is going forward. Maybe it's too much work going backward. When we have audit committee, when we have audit findings or recommendations, it's really hard to tell like how risky they are. Are these high risk, medium risk, or low risk? If most of the high risk were not cleared, I will feel like, okay, more comfortable, even though we have some old one. But if a lot of old when the high risk and they have not been clear, I think it's a big problem. So I think if we can add that in for future audit findings, I think it really will be helpful for this committee and the board and management too, right? So they can prioritize that we tend to go first because with over 100 findings, I understand it's a lot to, you know, manage, yeah, so.
May I respond, Chair? I agree wholeheartedly. And we've talked about that internally in relation to doing, adding the risk layer. So we will incorporate that. I also want to talk about the '22, '23 because that's when the contracting one and two were there. And I think you all have heard me say this. So allowing those recommendations to have a late implementation date, I believe, did a disservice to the agency. However, on the other side of that, we know that there was an ERP implementation. Nobody envisioned there would be the challenges and then the return to CMS. So there's context there, right? And I think that everybody came together and tried and wanted to work in that context at that time. We have taken a different approach because I take very seriously timely implementation, you know, and as well as the rest piece. So we have conversations with the administration in the process of finalizing dates to make sure that we're talking about, is that, is that an appropriate amount of time? So, and then I would also request this committee, when we bring forward the audit recommendations in the audit reports as well, that when those dates are there, because we've talked to the management at that point and we are feeling that they're reasonable. So if we come now and bring an audit report and it still doesn't sit well with you, especially once we put the filter of high, medium, and low, I would really appreciate if we have this conversation because I think it, it benefits all of us. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks, Chair. Work continues to get better every year, so I appreciate seeing that. One of the things I struggle with, which has already been touched with a little bit, is, you know, the chart that's up, that is great. But as we get more years, and hopefully this won't be necessary eventually, to see something like that in graphical format would be useful from the perspective of knowing, are we falling further and further and further behind? Or are we catching up? You can kind of tell it from a numbers perspective. But when you put it in lines, you can see lines going up or lines going down. But just a comment there. As far as this year, page seven, I noticed that there were lots of implemented but few closed. And I'm just wondering if that's a timing issue or a staffing issue. I could see that being the case if a lot were implemented and identified as implemented towards the end of the year. And we just haven't had time to go in and, and verify that they're closed. But just curious what, what, what causes there to be so many implemented but not very many closed? Listen, page seven, it was of the, of, well, it's, yeah, of the slide, of the, I don't know if it's the report of the slides, but it's titled Results of Recommendations Completed by Year. Oh, that's not page. Yeah. Yeah. We're, we're, okay, my notes may be wrong then. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, so, you know, for the last year, there's what? 12 implemented and unclosed? Is that what that's saying?
And that is a great point.
I, I, the difference was, I don't think, I think there's someone else in the report that said how many we actually got implemented and closed this year as opposed to by year in total. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. So the grand total is 47 implemented, two closed on the grand total, right?
Correct, and you do.
No, for grand total.
For this one. But you do want to realize that when you're looking at the last fiscal year, that's going to include audit reports that were just released. So with, right, the solicitation process, procurement process, sole source solicitation. It wouldn't be likely, and you'll see this too, when Deshari goes through the external recommendation compilation as well, that in the most current year, your implementation numbers are going to be lower because there hasn't been time for implementation yet.
Yeah, I guess the thing I'm trying to get, understand is how many were actually implemented this year and how many were actually closed this year, including prior years, right?
That's the, that's maybe is the definition. Closed actually mean they don't think that finding is relevant anymore and they don't have to implement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they just say.
Well, what's, what is the status for verified then in this year?
So the slide 13 is going to tell you, that's the, the 38%. So this fiscal year, they implemented 38% of open recommendations.
Okay. And when we, sorry, I have to go back to look at implemented means we verified it then?
Correct.
Okay, awesome, thanks. That clarifies it for me then. And then just the other, just other brief comment was, I noticed that the item, the, in the report was on page 17, was the second from the bottom, which was, starts out, says create a tracking system method for expiring contracts. The date of that completion, due date is extended by two and a quarter years so far. And I just think being able to call those out more prominently might be useful if we're getting things that have slipped two and a half years in the sense we may want to have some conversation as to why the due date's slipping so much. And so maybe a more prominent call out for that type of chain, you know, delay. Most of them are way less than that. Thanks.
I appreciate that here in Brazil because I think that it goes back to what Courtney had mentioned about, it's our responsibility as a board to, or as committee, to take that back to the board. It's like, hey, this isn't really acceptable. We like to see a little tighter timeline, so. Any other member comments? No, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. You know, following up on the implementation status definitions, it, it's curious that, you know, the, the category of closed doesn't mean that an action that was implemented has been found satisfactory. And now we have, you know, set it to, you know, put a button or a bow on it, now it's good. So I wonder whether the definition for closed, which is the recommendation is no longer relevant and implementation is not feasible, it would be better titled as dismissed. And add an implementation definition for closed, which in fact means this was, this, this recommendation was reviewed, was implemented, completed, and it truly is closed. We don't have to worry about that anymore. And then the category for dismissed would fit what's written here, which is no longer relevant, implementation is not feasible. That would be a recommendation. I don't know, you know, perhaps something that your team, Courtney, can evaluate and see if that adds clarity.
You know, I think for, for me personally, I think on the implemented, some of the actions they've taken, I think the majority of them require ongoing action. It's not like they put it in and they stop there. I think it, it reviews to how process and the agency works. So I'm not sure if that, but you're right, the, the closed part is a little bit tricky because you always think like, you know, we like, we like closure. It's finished, we're done. But I think that in the spirit of, of the meeting of it, I think that maybe dismissed might be a better term. But as far as the implementation, I think that, I, I think that you can never close out action that needs to be continually happening in the agency. That would be my, my expectation interpretation, so.
Yeah, thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense. You're right. You know, if something is being implemented and, you know, it's, it's not ever going to be closed. Perhaps we don't need to close it, right? And instead, just retitle this last line down here rather than closed, retitle it dismissed.
I'd like to add clarification. I do understand the confusion around closed and we will look at that. And the closed recommendation. So if you look at a chart or, you know, Emily's going to preview the online dashboard in a minute. And you'll see as we add data from past reports, those recommendations, once implemented or implemented, we don't go back and do work on them. So it's not a continuing implementation. If there's concern that there are implementation items, it hasn't fully been implemented, that's where you're seeing the partly implemented title. So the, I think we need to look at revising that end definition. I like dismissed, you know? And then as we bring all the old reports online, then adding closed, meaning closed done, you can check it off. So I think those are great recommendations for us to move forward on. And I also want to acknowledge in the charts, like when you're seeing here, is if a year doesn't have any open recommendations, you won't see that year represented on the chart. So that would mean all those past recommendations now in this new definition language that we're using would be closed and completed or completed. That could be another way to do it. So we'll, we'll work on making that easier to understand.
The definition, so really need the close? I mean, once this implement.
We don't, it's, and we've, and I think the confusion around this is, is that we found recommendations that were no longer relevant or feasible. So we closed them. We didn't, we wanted to say, don't consider these, OIPA closed them because they're not relevant based on our analysis of the recommendation. So that's a unique situation, right? So this is, that's why I think it's probably best to come up with a different word on there.
It's a little confusing for us.
Yes, thank you for highlighting that.
Well, I think that's what, you know, this committee comes out and we have great conversations. And, you know, I think the, the. And, you know, I think the importance is that the work gets moving forward, and I, and I think the public needs to be able to understand. If we're, if we have a little bit of confusion, the general public might have even more, so. I appreciate that, and you know, I think that one of the things that I hear, and I all reiterate all the time, is that the mission of OIPA and what they bring forward to, to this committee and to the board, it's pretty technical stuff and a lot to dive into, and there's a lot of outstanding stuff. I went back and I looked and, because I was like, man, I like stuff to get done. I want to be done fast and move through, it's just, just my nature. And I think our public thinks that where there's a lot of stalling going on, we're not, we're not going to talk about sensitive things. I think it's absolutely the opposite. The, the priority is on the most sensitive things because that's the, the risk that the agency has. And then, you know, in my life, I always think like, am I getting stuff done fast enough? And a lot of times I have to step back and go, well, it's not so much, you know, where I'm at on the ladder, but what direction am I, I'm headed? And I think if you look at the work that this, this, with all the office has done is amazing. It's gone through a couple CEOs, an interim CEO, three chairs, if I could, three or four chairs from the board and on this committee as well, since they were created in 2019. So a lot, a lot of moving parts. I think that Courtney mentioned that the staff has grown from five to ten, and that's, that's amazing. So it's not that this work is being solved, just we weren't prepared as an agency when it started to be where we're, where we needed to be now, six years later. And so I think that the work will continue, and I think that the amount of non-implemented or open items will probably continue to shrink, again, starting with the most important that have the most liability to the agency. So, and again, I know that the relationship between OIPA and management has been great. I think maybe more, more improved than when I got on the board in 2022 because we had a different CEO, we had a different independent auditor, and I think there was some, some distance between them. And so I know I feel a lot more comfortable that the work will move forward, so. I think now, were there any other comments regarding this one? So I think now we're going to be moving on to item four point two. Am I correct in that? Okay, fantastic, go ahead.
Okay, four point two is Sandag's External Audit Recommendation Compilation Report. So our process for external audits is a little different. We first identify all audits that are completed within the fiscal year. So we went back for fiscal year 2025 to see, to gather all of the audit reports, external audit reports issued to Sandag. We compiled a list of their recommendations if they had any and included any recommendations that were, remained outstanding from the previous years. As part of our, as part of our annual work plan, we reach out to management to get updates on those recommendations. However, OIPA does not perform any additional testing or analyzation of the evidence or information provided by management. So we reviewed a total of twelve external audit reports, eight with recommendations and four with no recommendations. You'll see in the list, these were the specific reports. You'll see the triennial 2018, 2021, and 2024 reports, and then the four audit reports that had no recommendations. Similar to OIPA's audits and investigations, we use the implemented and pending status definitions for the external recommendations. So our review this fiscal year found sixty-six pending recommendations, and by the close of the fiscal year, twenty-three of them were implemented and forty-three remain pending. And we have another summary chart similar to what you'll see in the dashboard that shows the current status of those recommendations per audit report. Since 2018, Sandag received a total of one hundred and ten external audit recommendations. And as of today, forty-three of them are implemented. Sixty-seven were, I mean, I'm sorry, forty-three are open and sixty-seven were reported as implemented. Overall, Sandag implemented sixty-one percent of their external audit recommendations, highlighting their continued focus on addressing external observations. Similar to OIPA's, similar to OIPA recommendations, Sandag made measurable progress just within the past fiscal year by implementing about thirty-five percent of their external recommendations. We look forward to seeing continued progress in this fiscal year. And looking ahead, so during fiscal year 2026, we will continue to work with management to evaluate the adequacy and effectiveness of process improvements and ensure timely implementation of outstanding recommendations. Progress, you can see. So to promote transparency and uphold accountability, we will maintain accurate statuses of all recommendations. We'll monitor implementation progress, and we're excited to announce that we will begin publishing quarterly updates to OIPA's online corrective action dashboard. And on the topic of the dashboard, I will now pass it to, pass it to my colleague Emily, who will give you a quick look at what the dashboard holds and what it can do.
Good morning, everyone. I am going to share my screen, so you should be able to see our dashboard. It is not yet public, but it is hosted internally on Sandag's Open Data Portal. So that might take just a minute to switch over from the PowerPoint. Okay, we're there. So I want to start by thanking the Sandag Data Science Team, Dr. Ling Tian. They are under Bits, which is under Grace Migno, who is behind us here today, for their expertise and for helping show us what's possible within Sandag's Open Data Portal. This dashboard should be going live by October, so it will, both the public, the audit committee, the board, any member of Sandag management will be able to reach it via OIPA's homepage. There will be an icon leading them to our audit dashboard. And I want to make a note that this dashboard currently only features audits that have pending or partly implemented recommendations. We will be adding a second dashboard that will show historically every OIPA audit that has ever been issued and all of the recommendations. So it will provide a more holistic view over time since OIPA's inception of how Sandag management has done in implementing all of those audit recommendations. But for now, to make it cleaner, we have the current active audits with recommendations that are still in need of implementation. So to start, we have a list, a bar chart here of all of those audits that do have recommendations that are pending or partly implemented. Anyone using the dashboard can filter by the date the audit was issued, the name of the audit in particular that they're looking for. You can filter by status, due date, and you can choose either a range or a relative date. And then you can also choose by the assigned department. So if you want to look up contracts and procurement, what audits do they have recommendations pending on? How many? If you hover over, it will tell you the status and how many of those recommendations are pending. And then clear that out, and it'll go back to where you started. Then if you scroll down, you can see all total pending audit recommendations. This includes the forty-seven that were implemented this fiscal year. The two that were closed this fiscal year, and then the pending and partly implemented that remain. If you toggle down and you want to see just as a table, it'll show you the total and then the percentage of the total to give kind of a bigger picture. And then finally, if you really want to get into the granular, we have a matrix with the actual text of the recommendation, the due date, the apartment, department it's assigned to, and then the status. So for example, if I wanted to see any pending recommendation that needs to be addressed by human resources, I can click on that, and it will drill down to the audit name, the date the audit was issued, when it's due by, and then the recommendation itself. So this should be able to help both the committee, the board, Sandag itself, and the public to have an easy, clear picture of what is going on, what's been implemented. And then we hope this will make it easier to track for you, the committee members, in the future. Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation on both the, well, on the external, but the dashboard is in relation to the OIPA Corrective Action Plan Status Report.
Thank you, wow, a lot of surprises there that I wasn't expecting, great, great stuff. Are there any public comments, Francesca?
We do not have any public comments.
Any member comments? Go ahead, please, Chair.
Thank you very much. I love the dashboard, and especially I love the, that was the question I was going to have, is when you scroll down to the bottom, the granular information that actually shows what the recommendation is, you know, who is responsible, that I really appreciate that. And then the search functions within, you know, so you can get specific information to what you are searching for, I really appreciate that. And thank you to the Data Science Team for giving us this tool. How was that information accessible prior to this dashboard?
Oops, it was not accessible.
Great, thank you for making this accessible now, absolutely, that's a great improvement. I do have a question on the previous presentation by Ms. Samuel. It was on, oh goodness, let me find it, slide number fifteen. Yes, on this overview, so we're talking about the external audits, and I'm trying to understand the second bullet point here, where as part of the annual work plan, OIPA requests management provides updates on the corrective actions outlined in their response for each external audit. Then the bold, no additional testing or verification is performed by OIPA staff in relation to external audit recommendations. Can you help me understand what that means?
Certainly, so verification procedures are not applied to these recommendations. These recommendations are made by external parties, and management and those external parties determine, they go through their own process to come up with the status of implemented, of pending or or implemented. So we don't apply any verification procedures. That's why the title of the report is it's a compilation.
Okay, thank you. So the verification does occur, it just occurs by the external team, the external group that compile or that completed the audit, that wrote the audit.
I think it depends on which audit, and Dushar may be able to speak to this more, like the triennial audit that is put forth for ITAC. The auditors will come in, they do that, right, every three years. They look at the recommendations and carry forward what's not been completed. So, and the, our, the Sandag CFO may want to speak to this as well.
Yes, it really is a similar process when, for example, Federal Transit Administration or the state with our Transportation Development Act funds, we have regular triennial performance audits. When the auditors come in to begin their audit, they're also looking back at previous audits, previous findings, and looking to validate or verify where those have been implemented or where there are still outstanding issues.
I will admit that, at least with respect to the ACFER audit, I got an answer that I wasn't particularly happy with, but it's the way it is. And my understanding of ACFER is they make recommendations, and the way they work is that they come back and do the audit the next year, and they don't encounter the same problem. They assume the recommendation is implemented, for lack of a better term. So they don't, they don't actually go in and manually verify that something was changed. It's just that the same problem doesn't crop up, then they're, then they assume, then it's not, the problem doesn't happen anymore, which clearly isn't the most robust process, but that's the answer that I got from Davis Farr when I asked them about this in a previous meeting. And there may be an opportunity for improvement there too, but just something to consider.
Chair, may I add a little bit to that? Getting way over here. I was actually pleased to see that in our, our federal audit, the Davis Farr had gone through last, the fiscal year twenty-three findings and said whether they considered them closed or not. And so it may not be the same level of testing, but it is something that they're looking at and considering. I think when you got that answer, it was the fiscal year twenty-three audit, and we had just changed from a different auditor to the new audit firm. And so the new audit firm wasn't comfortable going back and, and looking at and testing what had been a finding from the old audit firm. So there is some of that that is factored into the ACFER audit findings and resolution.
I have a question that I was surprised to see there's some very old audit, like twenty eighteen, still have pending findings. So my first question is from your, your understanding like why we have something this old? And the second question is, then, you know, this is a triennial review, right? Were they repeat findings in twenty twenty-one and in twenty twenty-four? Or they, these are new findings on top of twenty eighteen?
So I believe in the last triennial, one of their recommendations was to implement the prior recommendations that they saw a fall off on the administration's commitment to that. However, I'm going to again hand it over to Don.
Yes, that is the case. I will say, you know, one of the things that's happening as we are starting to get around to some of the harder, to implement things that require potential board action, potential amendments to the transnet ordinance, depending on the direction the board would like to take. Some of these have been working through various working groups to discuss, you know, options for how to potentially implement them. And so these are just becoming a little more challenging. Most of the simple things are done. Some of these are outstanding because they had like, you know, five or six subparts to them, and I'm done with five, and the sixth one is just really challenging. We might not be able to get the data to do it. We're still trying to find ways to get the data to do it, and we're not ready to close them and say it's not feasible because we are really making an effort to try to, to find ways to implement what has been, what has been recommended. So we're looking at these regularly. A quarterly report goes to the Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee. They are the oversight for these audits. And, and again, we've made substantial progress in the last year to really clear some of these out, but we're getting to some pretty challenging issues that we're still working through.
And maybe follow-up question, the challenges are, is it staff time, resources? Or there's, there's some more structural issues?
Yeah, Grace is going to talk about a few of the challenges that we're facing.
Good morning, committee members. Grace Migno, Senior Director of Data and Bits. So some of the audit recommendations from the 2018 Transnet Triennial Performance Audit are based on performance monitoring framework. And some of these data that they are requesting, it would be like a five-part recommendation on certain categories of data that may not be collected consistently across different jurisdictions. An example of that would be like pavement data. How can you be the region's person for pavement? And then different local jurisdictions collect pavement data differently. And so we're working through, we've worked through different working groups, whether it be the mobility working group, previously was called Sandec and Sea-Tec. We're working through those working groups and trying to find a solution to see if we can find a way to collect that data consistently from the different jurisdictions, traffic engineers, and their, and the associated staff. So that's just one example of a few of why some of these are still outstanding.
So using that example, the difficulties of collecting the data, how does it impact the actual operations or programs, or it, or does it not?
The jurisdictions are still receiving the funds to implement the, the money that they need to make improvements in their jurisdictions. It's just the way that it was set up however many long ago when the ordinance was set up, that the data wasn't, they were all collecting it differently. And so they're, they're, they're still providing all the associated paperwork and the data that's needed to show that they're using them. and the data that's needed to show that they're using the money effectively for their jurisdiction. It's just not considered the same when they're showing how they're measuring pavement across jurisdictions. That's just one example of a few.
So, so using that example, yes, the finding has not been clear, but it didn't have like really bad consequences impacting, you know, the residents or people who expect to receive.
Not at all.
Yeah, I, I would like to mention, right, the role of the Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee is to, you know, oversight the use of these taxpayer dollars that the voters elected to, you know, pay in, and that's the transnet program. The ordinance, you know, as Grace mentioned, you know, the, the local jurisdictions get a share of the funding from the ordinance. The ordinance itself doesn't truly compel to do things, you know, differently, consistently, uniquely, right? And we have this problem statewide when we look at local jurisdictions and needs assessment for pavement because of the various, you know, some are using PCI, some are using IRI. And to provide a consistent look at whether the investment in local street and road funding has reduced congestion by, you know, improving pavement countywide, right? It's just hard to get at what they really want to look at from a performance monitoring and output perspective. And again, you know, we have similar issues with, you know, it took quite some time to figure out how we were going to address some of the, you know, other performance concerns as well. And part of it is, you know, Sandag is the oversight, acts, the RTC, acts as the RTC, right? Administers the funding and the ITAC is very concerned about, you know, the outcomes of that. And most of them are outside of our jurisdiction's control. And it's a matter of how do we measure it? When you have nineteen jurisdictions doing things in a unique way, plus two transit agencies who aren't always in lockstep.
I do have a question, and this. So now that we have a new Director of Internal Control, how would the office get involved with all these recommendations? And the old recommendation being implemented, will the numbers get any better? As far as implementation?
Meaning the recommendations from the external audits as well as the recommendations?
External as well as internal audits?
Okay, yeah. So right now, what I am doing is trying to compile basically an inventory of all of the recommendations that currently exist across all of the audits that have been completed. And so based on that, what I'm trying to understand is, are we seeing themes across the board? What's the risk level of these particular audits? So that we can then start to prioritize and better address these recommendations in a more efficient way. So for example, across multiple audit recommendations, we'll see issues like training, documentation. If that's seen across the board, that's telling me that's an underlying issue. That's a root cause. And if we address that, then a lot of the recommendations that are associated with those, we can probably start to close those, close those particular recommendations. So the short answer is gaining an inventory of everything at this moment to get an overall comprehensive picture of what currently exists so that then we can start tailoring and prioritizing what to address based on risk level and/or the priorities of this board.
Thank you for that, Shanae. Seems like an improvement.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the report and the dashboard's amazing. So appreciate the work that's done on the dashboard. I guess just for my own edification clarification, you know, looking at some of the recommendations, I did notice the ones from 2018, there's a bunch in there that says, ITAC should suggest Sandag do X. So are those not closed because ITAC hasn't suggested that? Or simply forwarding this report to the board meant ITAC did suggest it and Sandag hasn't implemented it? Do we know that?
So we work closely with ITAC. ITAC has its role
Right.
in oversight, you know, the funding and making recommendations. The Chair of the Board and the Executive Committee have their role in setting agendas. Staff has a role in making recommendations. The process has not moved very quickly. As you are probably aware, our agendas are very impacted most of the time. Speaking to the, some of the cancellations that have had to happen on those fourth Fridays of your own meeting. So we have been working diligently on agenda management so that we can prioritize what needs to get to the committees and the boards. I cannot speak personally
Right, I understand.
To that timeline. As you know, I've just been back a year in this role, this position. We are working to move forward on these recommendations.
I'm just trying to figure out if the delay on the 2018 recommendations is at the ITAC committee or with staff and the board. And if it's with the ITAC committee, maybe we can figure out how to schedule an extra meeting where they just look at this and say, are all of these still relevant? Do we still want to pursue them? Largely because, for example, I would note, you know, these are 2018 recommendations, so it's eight years ago almost at this point, based upon policy. And one of the, one of the requests is to make some, you know, to do some further checking in on Rule 21 of Board Policy 31. I don't even know if that Rule 21 and Board Policy 31 is the same after eight years, right? So does that even, is that even salient anymore? So that's what I'm just saying, we just need to, if, if, maybe we can see if we can get an extra ITAC scheduled if it is in the ITAC Ball of Court. So they review the ones that are outstanding saying, are these ones that we still really want to pursue? And try to get rid of the ones that are just maybe not worth it anymore.
We are talking about what is becoming history.
Yes, right.
Right? I believe ITAC is committed to, you know, trying to, you know, similar to this committee, make sure that the performance audit recommendations are carried forward. And, and again, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is, what was the response at the time? What was the action plan? Is it still appropriate today? Is there a different way to approach this and achieve the goal? And we're very happy that Shanae is here to help us do that because we do need to move forward on these.
Great, thanks. And then just along similar lines, just a note, of course, for these, none of them have target dates, unlike the, you know, our audits all end up with target dates. And many are very old. And I'm just wondering if we should even suggest that the board create a policy that says if any of these get beyond a certain age, four years maybe, whatever it is, that they have to be brought to the board and reviewed and determined whether or not the action should happen and put a target date at that point in time or something like that. Just some formal process that ensures things get cleaned up.
We are providing quarterly updates
Right.
on the Transnet Triennial Performance Audits. And those quarterly updates do have dates in them.
Okay. Of date, target dates of closures or just dates of when they were opened?
Yeah, the, the, Grace Mino. Yes, so I'm referencing what you're looking at. And now it says, ITAC should direct staff. And I know that's OIPA's recommendation, but we are also working with the Davis Farr recommendations with the triennial performance audit. We're working through it. We are having a larger conversation with the, the working groups because we want to do one last stab to see, can we get this data in a way that's consistent? And then once we've exhausted all options, we are going to go through ITAC to say, we've tried A, B, C, D, and E. It does, we've tried to fulfill the audit in different, the audit recommendations in different ways. And please advise us on whether or not we can just either close this out or say, we've tried A, B, C, D, and E and just move on like you have suggested.
Along those lines, the, there may be, it may be worth having a status indication that pending doesn't tell me anything as far as, is it not? So pending or being pursued or just something that indicates that this is being actively worked or versus just sitting there in future updates and, or has been actively worked. I mean, comparable to like the partially implemented that we have in the OIPA audits, right? Just some sort of different status that gives an indication that's not just sitting there with nothing going on, right? That might be useful in future updates. The, so, so thanks for that. Just another comment. I'm going to put a plug in for my non-agenda comments here. I just noticed on page 11 that a recommendation from 2021 is still impending, which says, explore options and feasibility of moving ITAC candidate screening and selection process outside of the Sandag Board to maximize appointment transparency and minimize any perceived selection bias. And I'll just note that because that's one of the key criteria that's in our currently proposed Board 39 policy changes that have been sitting there for about four years as well. And it, you know, with both of those out there might give a perception that the board isn't really interested in audit committee independence. So it's just something that, just something to, you know, encourage maybe moving both of these along since it's clearly been recommended for both committees. Something very, sorry, very anal, but that's my personality. Just, I just noticed that another one from 2021 says, immediately propose the amendments to the board for the ITAC. Well, immediately is long gone. So can we just close that one out? It's just, we're not going to do it immediately because that was four years ago. And so just, you know, being able to clean up some of these things and say, if they aren't going to get done, they're not going to get done. And let's just acknowledge that would be helpful. So thanks for, for all of the input.
Chair, can I make one clarification? The recommendations that you see in the external report are lifted directly. So I just want to clarify, those aren't OIPA's recommendations. Okay, thank you.
I'm glad to see. I wasn't the only one concerned about stuff from back in 2018. And it's funny because we think that 2018, as we, in this reference, it's so long ago. And I think the reference is it was back in the BC era, before COVID era. And so, you know, it's great that, you know, the, the importance and the focus is to get things off the books and get forward. I'm grateful to see the dashboard. You know, when you, when you see tools like that, the amount of time, effort and, and resources it took to get it done shows that the confidence of this office, it continues to grow. You put yourself out there for the public to have access to the stuff that hasn't previously been shown and it's searchable. It's not just, here's, here's a page splashed with whatever you want to. No, you can actually search and find out data. And I think with that comes accountability. And I think that that's what we all look for in our day to day and as elected officials, that having the accountability is really important to, to me personally. Yeah, go ahead, Emily.
I just want to say you can also download that data if you want to export it.
Another layer of, of, you know, proper exposure for us that there, that, you know, the transparency which we all work to work with exists. So I'm grateful for that. I do, I do have a question for counsel. Do we need to have a vote for each item? Because I think we might have missed a vote for 4.1.
Chair, that's really within your discretion. If you'd like to group items together in a single motion, I'll leave that up to you.
If, if it is okay, I just do a single. Okay, fantastic. I guess then we're, did we, did you cover it 4.2, so we're on to 4.3?
We are headed to 4.3.
All right, let's go for it.
Okay, I am here to present the annual investigation report. And this was prepared by Doug DePete, who is the whistleblower hotline manager. However, he is not able to be here today, so I will be presenting. We'll go over introduction background. We have two standalone investigations that are represented in the report. And one was initiated by the Audit Committee and the Board of Directors. And the other was initiated through a whistleblower hotline report. And then we're going to talk about the hotline and the results over the last year and then have questions. So the office, as you all know, is the official body of Sandag to investigate potential fraud, waste, abuse, and gross management. We initiate investigations either through a request by the Audit Committee or the Board, directly by myself, or through reports filed by the hotline whistleblower program. And then we'll assess if it's a requested investigation. We'll assess resources and we'll come to you if we need additional resources or it impacts the annual work plan. So one of the standalone investigations we issued was the SR125 companion investigation. In the spring of 2024, the Audit Committee and the Board of Directors requested that we conduct this to determine what members of Sandag's executive team and board knew of ETAN's significant performance issues and why the new BOs RFP was not reported earlier to the Board. The purpose was to determine who on the executive team and board knew, when they became aware, what they knew, and then what actions were taken by Sandag, if any, to address the issues. So the report, investigation report includes a one-page summary on this. The findings were that the Board was not notified until late 2023. All members of the executive team were aware of ETAN's BOs performance issues to varying degrees. And due to poor management, critical time needed to issue a back office RFP was lost. The other investigation that we issued a standalone report was received through a hotline tip on May 29th, 2024. The report came in that the replacement back office system being implemented by Deloitte and A to B for tolling operations alleged that the system is unsuitable for fulfilling the financial reporting needs required by Sandag to capture and complete reliable financial information and that the need to produce reliable and accurate financial reports was not considered when A to B was selected and awarded a sole source contract. The purpose was to determine if these allegations were true. We found that the finance department's financial reporting needs were not considered during the procurement process. System requirements were not developed for the replacement BOs implementation and therefore were absent in the contract with Deloitte. And that A to B move beyond software does not include an internal financial accounting system or a similar internal general ledger like ETAN's BOs. And that during this process, Sandag developed, discovered a critical component needed to facilitate the integration of the new back office system with Sandag's ERP system, which was responsible for the financial reporting, and that was missing. The outcome is we made six recommendations to the Board of Directors and Sandag Executive Management. And those were incorporated in the previous status report that you reviewed. So now we come to the whistleblower hotline program. So the purpose is secure confidential and reliable way for reporters, including Sandag employees, contracted department, parties, members of the public and other stakeholders to report alleged fraud, waste, abuse, or gross mismanagement. The information is submitted through a hotline is, and this is classified as a whistleblower report. The whistleblower reports can be submitted for the report, reporting period that you're looking at. They could be submitted via email, phone, or mailed report form. And that reporters can remain anonymous. Our investigation process includes a preliminary analysis to determine if the matter in the report warrants an investigation and if enough information has been provided for us to initiate an investigation. During the preliminary analysis, we look to see is, does the report involve Sandag's property, infrastructure, employee officials, contractors? Or does it otherwise fall in Sandag's jurisdiction? Does it meet the criteria of fraud, waste, abuse, and gross mismanagement? Did it occur within the last year? If not, does it impact current operations? And is there sufficient information provided to initiate an investigation? And last, is the matter currently being litigated? We do not investigate matters under litigation. So over this time period, we received 13 reports. They're categorized as you can see above. We had seven in the category of other, which related to improper grant awards, project management issues, security protocol vulnerabilities, operational inefficiencies, and poor customer service. We also had issues each related, one case in misconduct, waste, theft, hiring irregularities, and two in the category of environmental protection, health, or safety law. This tells you a year-over-year comparison of our reporting. And you can see, as we anticipated, that the reporting would go up from last year to this year. So just to run through the numbers, we started off the last fiscal year coming in with two open cases. We received 13 cases. We closed 13 cases and we have two open cases. So the results for the closed reports are as followed. One report resulted in multiple allegations being substantiated. And that was the investigation that we made recommendations to Sandag Board and we issued as a standalone investigation. Two reports were refuted, meaning that we found the allegations to be false. One report was not substantiated, meaning we couldn't find evidence to support it or not support it. And one report was closed before an investigation was initiated. Sandag staff had detected and resolved the matter while we were still doing preliminary analysis. And then one report was closed before an investigation was initiated. And then one report was closed before an investigation was initiated. And what we found is that Sandag management provided the evidence. They had already identified the issue. They had already resolved it, and the operation controls were found to be effective. We had one report closed before an investigation because the allegation did not have merit. And then six reports were qualified because they did not qualify as fraud, waste, abuse, or gross mismanagement, or were outside of the whistleblower's jurisdiction. Looking ahead, as I've already stated in my update, Ethico's third-party whistleblower hotline reporting case management system will be launched in September, so that the employees will be able to access that, and then we'll push it out to contractors, subcontractors, and vendors. We are initiating an exciting third-party integrity unit, but I'll save that for my annual work plan update, that report that I'm going to do next. The Let's Talk Ethics Quarterly series has turned out to be a hit at Sandag, so we're going to continue that. And Ethical Climate Survey, we issued the report in January of 2025, and we said that the cadence would be a year and a half. So we will initiate the next one in May of 2026. So with that, I am complete, and we'll take questions.
Do we have any public comments, Francesca?
Thank you, Chair. We do have one public comment. Blair Beekman, you can go ahead.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Internet service along the trolley corridor between Old Town and Santa Fe Station can sometimes be intermittent where I'm at right now. I just wanted to quickly comment the importance of whistleblower protections. I think it is really an important issue to work on. It can't be understated how important it is. And so you're trying to do that effort here. Thank you. The work I've done with tech accountability really came on about 2014 with a whole bunch of new guidelines and accountability practices to get us out of the era of 9/11 and continual war. Part of that process was included in that process was the ideas of whistleblower protections and as part of a whole accountability package. So how our police can use whistleblower protections, it's important. It's learning how we build trust overall, and that the whole process becomes a place of trust, and we can talk to each other more and more easily over time. That's the goal. Good luck with what you're trying to do here. It's always difficult work, and just real good luck. Thank you for these efforts.
Thank you. That concludes the public commenters.
Thank you. Any committee's comments? Yeah, thanks for the update. Good to see. Again, it looks like the system is growing and becoming more robust, and I appreciate all the additional features that are being added in. Just first question, our first comment is back to my anal tendencies, just on the introduction there. And actually, I guess it's on page two. It just says, earlier on April 26, the Board requested the IPA perform this investigation. I think the only thing a board can do is take action, and the board did not take action on this. There was no motion. So I would think more accurately, we say, a couple of board members requested it, or maybe name the board members, but the board actually didn't take action. So they didn't officially request anything, but there were a couple of board members that brought it up. I certainly acknowledge that. And that's one of the reasons we chose to take action at the Audit Committee, which was to provide that clear guidance. Next comment is, you notice two items were closed before the investigation because staff had already acted on them. One of them, you made the comment, which I really appreciated, which was, yeah, we actually, it was actually identified that the process controls were working, right? That comment wasn't made on the other one. So do we know that there wasn't a gap there, that there isn't a reason to look further and identify if there are any process control improvements that could be made to make sure whatever the management did address won't come up again? If that makes sense?
It does make sense. I would say that the, they did find it. So where I'm pausing is timeliness.
Okay.
So you always want management to find these things versus the auditor, right? But the timeliness of finding it is the issue.
Just to be transparent, what I want to make sure isn't happening, for example, is you have an employee that's raising an issue to their management that isn't getting addressed, then reports it to you. Management hears that it's been reported to you, and then just goes ahead and addresses it, right?
I understand.
Because are we sure that nothing like that is going on? Is the primary question. If so, can we just make sure that in the future, we're actually saying, no, there isn't anything here that we should look into further? I can't tell if it was the case one, but I'm sure we're pretty good, because I know you guys take your job pretty seriously, so I appreciate that. And the other one, I did notice that a couple of them were closed because they weren't fraud, waste, and abuse. And you're doing a great job with communication and putting that out there. I don't know if we want to, as part of that, share examples of what aren't fraud, waste, and abuse as part of that education, so people get an understanding, a better understanding of the role of this group, so you don't suddenly, you know, just as part of the education is saying, okay, this is what we're looking for, this is not what we're looking for, because that's not really our job. And if you're looking for these types of things, these are the more appropriate ways to report those issues, that kind of stuff. Just since you're doing such a great job educating, might as well take the opportunity and share those examples as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And that is incorporated in the new platform. You'll see that, and also I'll incorporate that into our next Let's Talk Ethics series. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Ms. Courtney, I'm hoping that you will cover the Let's Talk Ethics Quarterly series in your next report, on the work plan?
It will be covered. It is included in our initiatives, but I'd love if you have more questions or thoughts about that.
I was wondering, is this the appropriate time to ask my questions first? I want to know, are these quarterly meetings recorded? Can we have insight into these meetings if we're not attending them ourselves?
I shared that is a great question, and I know that the Board has expressed interest in that. So let me just share with you, as we are working to build relationship with the staff, my concern is that staff might be less, ask less questions if board members or audit committee members are there. We don't record them, but I have not directly stated that. So that's why I have hesitated to incorporate board members, because I know you asked and another board member asked. Yes.
That's fair, and I do appreciate wanting to maybe protect the conversational aspect and the trust that would be built regarding this topic, because this is a very difficult topic. You think ethics, there's such nuance to a lot of it that it is worthwhile to talk and consider and reconsider and reestablish your thinking around ethics. So I would like to suggest, I understand these are not recorded, and that's fine, but if you have material such as a PowerPoint presentation or something that goes into a part of the meeting, if that could be made available, so that I can, we can reap from it as well, if we're not the ones actually attending. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. I do have a question. You know, when the investigations, like I'm looking at the investigation of the 125, is it closed, or when does it become closed?
So the investigation is closed when we issued the report. That means our work has been completed. We've identified the issues. We've reported it out on them. And in the case of the second one with the new BOs system, we made recommendations. And some of those recommendations, if you go back to the corrective action status report, you'll see some of them are implemented, some of them are still in process.
So as far as your office is concerned, the only, what you're looking at is for your part of the thing, is just to make sure the recommendations have been given, or they have to be followed up on? Like?
They have to be followed up on, yes. So they go right into the report that we provide you. When Emily previewed the dashboard to you, the investigations are in there as well.
Okay. I think that, I was just curious, I wasn't sure. Sometimes each department has a different role, and I know that, I guess the process goes all the way to the end. I think it's great that the whistleblower processes continue to improve. You know, there's a couple of those years where there's very few reports being made, and it's kind of that old adage, well, if they don't have a phone number to call, they're not going to call. So I guess we're okay, because we're not getting complaints. And I would expect that the amount of, I don't know, complaints or people using the whistleblower hotline will probably increase, and I don't think that that's going to be a bad thing for people to be concerned about. I think it's actually a good thing, because we're putting out a tool that's meant to be used. Now, the findings from that might be different, and I appreciate members, you know, and you talked about the education of waste, product, abuse, because in the public's eyes, that takes such a different turn. Having snacks and some water isn't a waste, fraud, or abuse. It's just part of what we do for a meeting, but it's interpretation. And again, I appreciate the accountability that goes on for the third party, because it sounds like, I hope I get this right, that the third-party reporting and the case manager, they'll just kind of, but it's still your office that will determine what steps need to be taken. Is that correct?
Exactly. It's just a platform. It's a reporting platform. And then the case management system is a system that we access, that's confidential, that we utilize to put our case information in. The program is completely run by my office. It is just run on now a secure platform.
Oh, okay. That's okay. I got it. So it's just, you got mixed up between it being a platform, being a third-party helper type of thing. So gotcha. Okay, well, that's all the other, that's all the questions I had. Anybody else? No? All right, I think we're going to be moving on to 4.4.
Great. Okay, I am very pleased to present the proposed annual work plan and risk assessment for fiscal year 26. Before I get started, I want to point out that there's a few differences in our format. So we really wanted to focus this conversation on the annual work plan and the risk assessment. So we've extracted out previously strategic goals, performance measures, and accomplishments. That will be brought forward in October at that time, when you all are moving forward in the performance evaluation of the IPA. And we're working overall to make sure that our communications are all clear and consistent. So that's the right bucket for those things to be in. So if you notice a difference between the two reports, that is a difference. So Board Policy 39 states that the IPA shall annually present the annual plan, the audit plan to you. We call it a work plan because it includes much more than audit. And Board Policy Section 3.1.7 also says the Audit Committee has granted the authority to approve the annual audit plan after discussions that were occurring today. So your plan is before you as proposed. So I conducted an annual risk assessment to inform the areas to be audited in the coming year. We put the risk assessment process in the appendix this year, so you can look at the steps that go through a risk assessment process. The risks that were identified as significant was continuing, contract management processes continue to be high risk, hiring and promotion practices, budget management, and agency-wide internal controls. Now, the risks were then prioritized and incorporated in this year's proposed plan. Many of these things we already had underway. You know that we presented Sandag sole source procurement process audit to you in May. We had two audit recommendations there. So a review of the sole source solicitation process improvements will occur in the annual work plan, and that's identified in there. So again, that keeps us in the contracting realm. We also recommended an assessment of the planned capital projects outcome, and that's incorporated in the work plan, and that was proposed from the sole source procurement process. After the ethical climate survey was issued in January, we talked about the concerns that staff raised around hiring and promotion. So that was actually talked about in March when we did the adjustments. We talked about it during the proposed amendments to the previous audit work plan. And budget management practices have come up as a high risk during this risk assessment, and already knowing that was occurring, because a risk assessment is not just something I do annually, it's something that is occurring all the time in my conversations and review of materials. I incorporated that into the scope of work in the contracted independent assessment of the finance department that will be coming to you in November, so you'll see that. And then Sandag's inventory management over major and minor assets, as the former chair had noted, this was previously in the audit work plan. And when the previous IPA went to initiate, or did actually initiate the audit, it was determined that it was best to put that on hold. So we are proposing to re-initiate that immediately and to perform the inventory management over major and minor assets. So as I stated, it's not just an audit plan, it's a work plan. And the risk-based approach is to expand OIPAs oversight capabilities. So we are recommending here a third-party integrity unit designed to apply risk profiles to Sandag's contractors and vendors, and when warranted, to analyze the integrity of their activities further. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. The work plan includes performance audits currently in process to be completed, ones that will be initiated and completed this fiscal year, some that will just be initiated this fiscal year, others, the annual and quarterly reports that we're presenting today. The quarterly report is that we will present to the Audit Committee, as you all requested, a quarterly corrective action plan update, and then we'll talk about OIPAs other key initiatives. So performance audits currently in process to be completed is HNTB will be presented to you in October. The independent assessment of the finance department will come to you in November. That's being performed by Weaver LLP. And then the administration of the bike program, early action plan, which was previously approved in the prior work plan. Audits and investigations that we will initiate and complete in this fiscal year is the inventory management, major and minor, review of sole source solicitation process improvements, and we anticipate, again, two standalone investigation reports. Audits that will be initiated this year but not completed is the hiring and practices, promotion practices, that will be a contracted audit. We have yet to let the RFP just due to all the things that we have going on. And then the assessment of planned capital project outcomes. And then, of course, all the annual and quarterly reports that are being presented today, as well as the cadence of when they'll be presented next year. Our key initiatives include the third-party integrity unit. We will be designing a risk profile framework and the application of assessment procedures to our third-party contracts and vendors, and also reach into the subcontracting world. We will maintain a database of these third parties' risk profiles and require annual submission of updated information. What this does is it deters bad actors. The existence of such a program is a deterrent, because once contractors, vendors, and employees are aware, this spreads an awareness that transactions are being scrutinized for fraudulent activities. In addition, based on the risk profiles, we will then be initiating further procedures that could lead to an investigation. It will also identify lapses, gaps, or circumvention of critical processes and procedures sooner, thereby reducing harmful impacts to Sandag. As I stated in my update to you all, a peer review is required every three years. We must complete our peer review by November of 2025 this year. We will be having the Association of Local Government Auditors complete that peer review. And then just stating possibly the obvious, a peer review requires staff resources. We have to coordinate with the peer review team, complete questionnaires, organize files, and we conduct a preliminary self-assessment as well. System implementations, you had the opportunity to see the online corrective action dashboard that will be up and running on our online, on our webpage by, no, later than October. The third-party whistleblower hotline by Ethico will be launched in September. An audit work paper management system, we're hopeful, will be up and running in January. And then we are going to initiate a website, a website refresh that will be completed in June or May or June, making our website easier to navigate and more focused on issues of accountability and oversight. The survey will be issued in May, as I stated, and then this year, we are going to initiate a public risk assessment survey. This is going to increase the participation. It also will provide, we've had a lot of ideas come forward. When you look at your report in the appendix, you see all the ideas that were considered, and that will be presented in the risk assessment survey, so that individuals can rank those, so that we can... so that individuals can rank those, so that we can really narrow, um, our focus on some of those risk areas that have already been identified. We have a broader reach now that it will be a risk, um, survey. It will afford people who do have limited time to participate. So we see this as a very good thing. The Let's Talk Ethics Quarterly series, we will be continuing forward with that. And then, as I stated, we are going to publicize the hotline to contractors, subcontractors and vendors. So in March, I came forward and I provided revisions to the work plan. And we do that because that's required for me to quarterly review the work plan and see where we are. As the former chair had noted, that I was a little bit optimistic with the first work plan that I presented. We had, uh, two audits that we had removed in the revisions in March, the talent management, workforce planning and succession. And that still remains a high priority, um, as well as the project management, internal projects and capital projects was removed. We know that the CEO and his team are, um, developing a project management department and putting a lot of things in place. So it's not really the appropriate time right now to go in and evaluate that. But you'll see that come back online with the first one with, um, workforce planning. You'll see aspects of that covered in the independent assessment of finance. But there needs to be a succession planning and workforce planning done. So we'll revisit that in twenty seven. We also came forward and in relation relationship to the department risk assessment that was removed in March twenty twenty five, we let you know that it wasn't feasible to do that. We saw that a greater need was to do a departmental internal controls training. So we added that in March of twenty twenty five. We'll bring the department-wide risk assessment process back in fiscal year twenty seven. And then, as we prepared our materials for the internal controls training, we had conversations with management and their ability to conduct this training with the assistance of their new internal controls director. So it was decided that they would take this over and that we would remove this from our workload. And that would give us the opportunity to to continue to focus on other high priority audit work. This is a new addition to your audit work plan this year. It shows you month by month exactly where our ongoing work is, where we're initiating work, and then when we're publishing or launching. So it gives you a good sense of our cadence over the year, all the things that we are moving forward, all the things that we're involved in. And I I look forward to your questions about the chart. It's very little up there, but I'm going to leave that to your direct questions. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, appreciate that. Are there any, uh, public comments, Francesca?
Thanks, Chair. There are. Blair Beekman, you can go ahead.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks a lot for this item. I wanted to be able to comment on, uh, upcoming work plan items for two thousand twenty six. You had an item, uh, at your Public Safety Committee a week or two ago. Uh, it was a presentation on, um, data, uh, collection practices at the state level and how that is, uh, helping with crime reporting issues. Um, there's new, uh, state laws that, uh, data collection has to be a bit more, um, broad in its, uh, what it's actually saying. Uh, I think that's to respect, uh, you know, uh, you know, new policies in 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 civil protections and human rights ideas. Uh, it was being questioned by Sandag staff. And there were problems developing that, uh, they couldn't get, you know, certain information needed for their crime reporting. Um, so, uh, compromises and and negotiations going to have to be developed at some point. But as my opening public comment mentioned, we're really focusing on working on on settling out what is going on at the Fed level with, uh, data collection at this time. And I think, you know, the importance of of working on our immigration policies, having a clear direction with that, setting a good standard with that, uh, then can allow maybe in six months to a year's time what was mentioned at the Public Safety Committee meeting. Um, I think that can be a better time to move forward. I just wanted to mention it this time, uh, as an idea, uh, for you to consider. Um, good luck in your efforts in 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 doing that. And that, um, yeah, I I think it's important, uh, it is important for myself to offer at this time as how to consider the issue, uh, for future work plan, uh, efforts. And, um, thanks for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments.
Thank you, Francesca. Any, uh, committee member comments?
Um, just want to thank you as always. Your work plan is very thoughtful and very comprehensive. Um, I'm very intrigued about the third-party integrity unit, uh, um, initiative. Will the work be done internally or will you, so you'll be gathering information about, uh, the contractors and vendors and then put in a database? And I assume the database, is it public facing or?
No. Yeah, okay. It will not be public facing. It is, and it's something that private companies do. So we're excited about this initiative. Um, but it will be housed internally, uh, and it will not be shared. It will be used for our purposes.
And 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 so you've seen this being done somewhere else successfully. And I assume that, um, your contracting procurement folks will have access to that. So they, when they make, um, you know, decisions, they have additional information to help them select, you know?
I, no one will have access to it outside of OIPA, but I hear what you're saying. Obviously, when there's a risk factor, that's going going to be addressed. That's what the purpose is, you know, to make sure. So we'll figure out our report mechanisms to make sure that it has the greatest benefit to Sandag. So that's why the last bullet point was that this, we anticipate that this will, uh, reduce bad impacts to Sandag, yes.
I think it's a really, as I said, very intriguing idea that if implemented well, I think it'll be very beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you for this report, Courtney. Um, I really like the blue arrows, um, the, um, work plan by month. Um, it it's actually very beautifully detailed. It's almost a summary. I mean, it is, it's a summary of the entire work plan. Um, so easy to digest and visualize and and, um, see, see it through to completion. So thank you for putting it together that way. I think, um, the way that you present the information, uh, really, you know, uh, Chair Fisher was saying, you know, this is a very technical piece of work, you know, auditing and and, uh, we are responsible or you are responsible for so much. But distilling it in this way so that folks can just easily grasp the essence of what we're trying to do is is really helpful. So thank you for that. I have, uh, three questions. One, uh, at the very beginning, you were talking about upcoming, um, audits that will be completed, uh, within the fiscal year. You mentioned one is coming in October, another one in November. And then the last one is the bike audit. Uh, when do you expect that to be done?
Well, if we look at our chart.
Yeah. I'm sure it is.
I believe it's May. We're going to confirm that, though.
Thank you. Um, my other question has to do with the peer review. And I I wondered whether the peer review is done by one of our peers, meaning outside of Sandag, or is it done, you know, by Sandag employees?
Thank you. So the bike audit is going to be published in April. That's what we anticipate right now. Um, so the peer review is done by our peers. And when we say peers, it's other oversight entities. So this is ALGA, the Association of Local Government Auditors that we belong to, is, um, other members include counties, cities, uh, other municipalities, regional organizations. They even, it's international, there's international people. So they participate, um, and they will be sending a team here. Typically, team members come from other offices. When I was in Oakland, we had offices, uh, we'd have an auditor from Honolulu and an auditor from Arizona. So they participate, they come together, and then they follow this rigorous structure to go through and ensure that they can say that our systems are adequate to be in compliance with government auditing standards.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see it needs to be completed by this year November.
True.
Um, so have we identified the folk, that our peers that will be reviewing us or?
They will. They have a coordinator. So ALGA has a coordinator who then reaches out and finds out. So we, I have to initiate that process with ALGA, and then they'll identify that. I've had initial conversations, but we need to finalize.
Got it. Um, and and, you know, this year has just flown by. We're already in August, right? Um, but we are on track for that, to complete it by November.
Yes.
Got it, thank you. And then my final question has to do with, uh, risk assessment versus internal controls for the audit, um, that you mentioned was coming off of the twenty twenty five work plan, uh, regarding, uh, department risk assessment. I wanted to understand what's the difference between department risk assessment versus department internal controls training?
So we had previously identified, this was on last year's work plan, that we wanted to go in and do a departmental risk assessment to really look at their controls, identify where the high-risk areas were and evaluate that. So that's looking, that's working with the departments, looking at their internal controls, and then identifying where there's gaps and things that need to be addressed. At that point in time, they didn't have a directors, a director of internal controls. So as we did our audit work and identified that internal controls in the agency is a high risk overall, that's when we stepped back and brought the conversation in March and said, we want to go through a training first. We want to make sure everybody understands internal controls, their purpose, so that we could walk through assist staff in understanding that process and have them self-assess versus us coming in and dinging them. That wouldn't be helpful. That's not what we wanted to do. Um, so that's when we turned to, let's go, let's do a training. Then, as we talked to management, and they do now have a director of internal controls, then it was decided that it would be best suited if management goes goes ahead and trains their own people, which I think is fabulous. And I just want to say, um, you know, I said, we're going to bring back the departmental risk assessment. But we too are excited to see what initiatives and, um, how the new director is going to approach internal controls, because we may come back and say, based on what Shanae has done, we don't anticipate that we need to do this departmental wide risk assessment, because I think she's doing a risk assessment that she may want to speak to.
Uh, that's great. As, uh, Ms. Shanae approaches the mic, I just want to offer, this is such a fair, um, you know, fair action to take upon this information, you know, that is necessary. It is needed. It's essentially a level-setting, uh, you know, opportunity. And, you know, I think that is very fair. And I do appreciate the, you know, philosophy of rather than go and find all of the gaps and go and, you know, um, publish, you know, all of the improvements that are need to be made, uh, we're actually going to do it a smarter way. And we're going to give the opportunity to this, uh, new group, um, and have have the information be more salient once it does come around. Thank you.
So I can speak to that. Uh, thank you, Courtney. Um, yes, what I, part of what I am doing currently, um, a lot of what you will hear from me is, um, level-setting and sort of foundation building to get an understanding, comprehensive understanding of where we are as an organization. Um, so part of what I am doing is the equivalent of an internal risk assessment to inform my work. That internal risk assessment is having a conversation with all of the directors within the organization. It's also looking at all of the corrective action plans, um, that have come through, as well as my, um, discretion from my experience and work, um, as an auditor, as a consultant and in the, um, auditing profession, um, over the last decade or so. From that, um, I will identify the high priority areas that we need to address within the organization. What I can tell you right now, um, from an internal controls perspective, and not to get all wonky and nerdy in the language, um, but most of what I am seeing currently that I'm going to focus on is related to the control environment, and it's related to the control activities. So what that means is the control environment, it has to do with, um, the tone at the top. It has to do with assigning roles and responsibilities and making sure those are clear. Um, and it has to do with making sure that there is an expectation within the organization that internal controls will be, um, monitored, taken seriously, um, that that expectation is there. The control activities also, um, those relate to where we have identified that there are weaknesses, um, within particular systems. What are we doing to mitigate those issues? Um, mitigations will not be perfect, but what we need to do is to make sure that we are actually looking at the items, addressing them, um, as appropriate with the resources and the capacity we have at, um, at the moment. Um, and that is a conversation, um, that I want to, um, basically establish with Courtney so that there's a rapport, um, there going back and forth so that what we are doing internally, um, it is also meeting the needs and the expectations, um, of OIPA, um, as a whole. Um, so I think at this moment, um, most of what we will be doing is level-setting, trying to get those policies and procedures, um, trying to get the the staff trained, um, and get the groundwork so that we can then start to look at continuous, um, monitoring, continuous improvement on a larger scale and and reach some of these larger-scale issues that you all will bring up or and have brought up, um, as a board.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and I also, as others have mentioned, really appreciate the month-to-month view. It's very great to see. Does look like, uh, uh, nobody gets to take vacation in October, though, because that month looks like it's pretty well-loaded up as far as number of concurrent activities going on. I guess the first question I have is just from the perspective of, um, I saw the one comment in here that the flexibility of the audit planning process is designed to allow for unplanned engagements at the cost of the IPA Board of Directors. And then, of course, we also have, you know, Doug working on the fraud, waste, abuse stuff. But I don't see how that's represented in here with respect to capacity or how much we intend to get through. So, you know, in audit plans several years ago, we, the way it was represented at some degree is we, you know, we have ten to fifteen percent of our capacity reserved for unplanned engagements. But I don't know, that that's a good way to do it either. But just understanding, you know, how many, I don't know if we want to represent how many fraud investigations we expect to get through and or what the trade-offs are if the board asks for, uh, another audit or investigation, where, how that gets potentially slotted in or even maybe what the process is going to be. So, um, you know, uh, having a little bit better understanding about that, I I would be useful, but, um, at some point, but I, you know, I'm certainly supportive of the plan as it stands. But as we evolve forward, um, figuring out how how that capacity is built in, because I'm assuming that some things are flexible, can move around. Um, and, uh, but how much capacity do we have to handle, uh, things that come up, uh, offline? Was my primary comment. Thanks.
Is there any other comments? Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, pardon me. Can I offer one more comment? And it has to do with the last page of your report, which you didn't actually cover. Uh, and it is the budget. Um, it's the fiscal twenty twenty six budget. Uh, I just wanted to understand, you know, is this sufficient for what you need? It says on here too, you have, um, you're expecting to increase staff to up to twelve FTEs. Are those within the budget already?
We're at ten FTEs right now with what you're seeing.
And the budget that's on page fifteen, does that include the additional two folks that would come on?
That includes the ten, the ten. So when we move to twelve, the twelve would be represented in next year's, the future budget. So we had, when we brought forth the staffing analysis in February of twenty twenty four, we anticipated growth at two auditors per year to get us in the realm of comparable offices. So, and I think, Vice Chair, that when we come with the budget, we present the budget in December to you, um, we'll have insight into that, you know, and our capacity needs and the third-party integrity unit. So we'll be able to say that we're on point or if there's additional resources. And we've got that balance, I think, too. You know, if there's some contract audits in here, there's some staff audits. And I have always believed that that is a good composition. Because we have, it creates greater capacity, greater oversight capacity.
Fantastic. Appreciate all the the work that's kind of, you know, when I, uh, met with Courtney for my briefing about this. You can always tell how staff looks at their work. You know, and I look at the the chart with all the arrows, I got a little overwhelmed. It looks like a lot to me. Um, in my line of business, I luckily don't have to look at the the year as a whole. I have a kind of day-to-day and week-to-week, but I was a little overwhelmed. But the enthusiasm that you have for the work is so good. Um, again, this is very technical, very. Again, this is very technical, very deep-diving type of work that you do, but the excitement that you have. And I know that your excitement carries over because you have a supportive team who will help you get the work done. A leader is no good unless they have an amazing team to support him. And again, I look at the work plans, it doesn't seem overly ambitious where you're going to come back in a year and say, oh, we had to cut this, cut this, cut that. Obviously, there's some dependence on making sure you have the amount of staff and some of the new hires you need to, remember Zito's point, you know, as long as the Board of Directors isn't sending some crazy, you know, pipe dream of, you know, cat and mouse or, you know, throwing the rabbit down the hole, then you'll be able to accomplish all this. Because, and that, I think, is really important for every board and even on the councils that we serve to remember is that there's a finite amount of resources, whether monetary or staff time. And so, you know, pet projects and stuff like that, while might be entertaining to an individual, it may not meet the goals of the agency or the city or whatever it might be. So, you know, I know there's some requirements for your team to take care of and satellite and if it missed Board Policy 39, but I think the fact that you're prioritizing what's important, where you see the growth and the growth that you've had since your time here, we were able to see year over year. And so I think that as you meet the goals, that to see where the agency is going to be is, is getting in a good place for me. And, you know, we were talking about the internal controls and it's so nice because your office doesn't sit there and go, we want to be the authoritative, you know, hand, and it doesn't go unless we say so. You're like, well, if we have somebody I absolutely trust who can take care of the work and it takes something off our plate and puts it back to local control, which in the realm of politics is really important for me. I wish Sacramento wouldn't double so much in little cities like Imperial Beach or National City or even Solana Beach, but, so I appreciate that because, again, you know, it's so easy to have the work that you do, kind of having that thumb over stuff, and people may misinterpret what the goal is of the independent auditor. It's not to control, it's to make sure that what's going is going in the right direction, the right way and legally and all that stuff. The public risk assessment survey, I think, is amazing to hear the public and what they have to say. Also with the employees, we had, you know, over 1,000 respondents to the past surveys. So I think that that's really good, because, you know, part of being transparent is listening to the voices that speak up the fact that we have people in the public sector who want to come out and be part of it means a lot to me. That's what they're there for. They should just participate half-heartedly in elections, but really follow through and, again, hold us accountable. So I don't have any other things other than to say thanks for the hard work. Getting this is a really heavy lift. I spent my week reading through all of it and, you know, as I felt like I was cramming the last couple days. And, you know, cramming doesn't always work, so I retained as what I could. But I'm grateful for the presentation is very clear and indicated what's going to be happening in the future. So are there any other final comments? I think that what we need to do now is make sure we have a vote. And we're asked to recommend that items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 be provided to the Board of Directors and to approve item 4.4, which is the fiscal year 2026 annual work plan. Do I have a motion in a second?
Can I have a comment?
Yeah, absolutely, hop on.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I really appreciate OIPA actually, in the beginning of the presentation, to remind us what the roles and responsibilities of this committee is, including monitoring the implementation and report back to the board to opine on if there are things that we don't think is timely or sufficient. And I think, you know, what 4.1, 2.3 have a lot of good data. I really think that this committee actually should at least summarize our view about, you know, are these recommendations implemented sufficiently or timely? I also would like us to acknowledge, you know, because I don't know who's going to do the presentation. I assume Courtney, but you being the Chair of the Audit Committee, probably you have a chance to make comments, too, right? I do want to, us to acknowledge, despite, you know, from my perspective, there's still a lot of old findings that really need to be addressed more timely. But I also want to acknowledge this past year, 2025, you know, the management has done a lot, right? I don't want to ignore that. I also want to acknowledge, you know, the dashboard is fantastic. I mean, I think it's really top-notch. And also the table that you're able to allow this committee to do a job, you know, well, is also very important and impressive. So I want to acknowledge those, but also want to bring up that, you know, from my perspective at least, you know, there are definitely some not very timely implementations. And then one more thing I really would like to, that I already mentioned, that add the risk component assessment of all these findings, so this committee can better monitor it, right? Because I know that we cannot not always get like hundreds of findings, you know, clear, but if we know that the high-risk one aren't addressed, that will really go a long way. So that's from my perspective.
I greatly appreciate that. Your insight is much needed with a bunch of rookies over here. I feel like Vice Chair and I are sandwiched between the ones with all the great knowledge. So I really appreciate that. And then, again, during the presentation to the board, I'll be sure to reiterate some of the comments that were made. So, yeah, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, I was going to make that comment earlier, is I really appreciate Member Zito and Member Agnes for being here and educating us, right? We are pretty fresh at all of this. And a lot of the, you know, insight and the work that went into the audit and Audit Committee and, you know, bringing it to the status that it is today, it is so valuable. There's no way that I would have known that information unless I sat and watched all of the videos on YouTube, right? Echnazium, so I don't, I don't think that I would prefer to do that versus having you here to share the wealth. So thank you for that. Thank you for all of the insight. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, we do have some action before us. I'll just go ahead and reiterate that we recommend that items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 be provided to the Board of Directors and to approve item 4.4, which is the 2026 annual work plan. I just need a motion in a second.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I second.
All right. Is vote?
Chair, I'm sorry, could you clarify who made the motion in the second for me?
The motion made by Member Nicholson and the second by Vice Chair Molina.
Thank you very much. That motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our agenda for today. And just to make a note that our September 5th Audit Committee meeting has been canceled. So our next meeting was scheduled to be Friday, October 3rd at 9:00 a.m. Thank you. Enjoy your Sandec summer.